Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, July 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. In accordance with the provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by the Governor on June 16th, 2021, the July 22nd, 2021 Public Meeting of the Planning Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. At this time, I'd like everybody to make sure that they're muted and remain muted until they're asked to speak. For the record, the planning board members present are myself, Mark Knox, the chairman. I have Peter Conroy present, Barbara Mankowski present, Michelle McEckern present, and Jack Lynch is present. Our clerk Kathy Murray is present. And if you're called on to speak, I would ask that you state your name and project that you're affiliated with, or your address if you're in a butter. At this time, the first item on our agenda is a continued site plan review of 124, 126, 128, and 130 Crooked Lane, presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers. So at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers, representing Mr. Crossley, Mr. Staran, and Mr. Crossley for a site plan on Crooked Lane. At our last meeting, which was probably a month and a half ago, we were tasked with several things, some information that was brought to our intention that we were, that we looked into. And we're back here tonight to kind of give you an update, but also hopefully get approval on the site plan review process so that we can proceed forward with getting the site into construction and getting things cleaned up out there. So first, one of the things that was brought up was about natural heritage, the endangered species habitat. So what the applicant has done was they've reached out to biologists. All four lots have reached out to biologists. If you've driven by the site, there's been turtle fence installed. And there have been two different biologist parties that are doing the sweeps. One is doing it for lot four, and then there is another company doing it for lots one, two, and three. I've been in touch with both companies. I believe one of the biologists was actually onsite today doing the turtle sweeps for lots one, two, and three, which is progressing nicely from everything I've been told. The other questions that came in was dealing with the DPW regarding the asphalt in front of the site. So I actually had a conversation with Franklin today and spoke with my clients. And we definitely want to discuss that and have some dialogue with the board tonight about the asphalt in front of the site. Another thing that was brought up was also the covenant to make sure that there's an agreement in place to make sure that the work gets done appropriately and in a timely manner. The covenant was sent over today. It was prepared by Attorney O'Shaughnessy, who's not here with us tonight. But in the covenant, what it does is it stipulates some timeframes. We had Mr. Crossley, both Crossley and Mr. Staran, talk to their general contractors to try to figure out timeframes on when they could get things to happen. If we get approval tonight, they believe that the timeframes that are listed in the covenants are very realistic. What we did do was understanding that weather conditions can preclude you from doing loam and seed in the winter. We have, there's a mechanism in the covenant where a bond will be held for the loam and seed to be done in the spring if need be. So that way, it's kind of covered if construction delays do happen, which does happen in this industry. If that does happen, then the loam and seed will get completed in the spring. And the monies will be set with the planning board to ensure that that happens. We also provided, I believe it was Barbara's request, that we provide an operation and maintenance plan for the drainage that has been submitted to the board for review. And also, there was an easement document that was drafted so the board could see it. That easement allows maintenance of the basin. And I believe what we discussed, which is in an emergency situation, the town can access onto it to rectify issues and backcharge the owner of lot two. If I may share my screen, I'd like to show you, we did make a small modification to the plan. And just with full disclosure, I'd like to show it.
Go right ahead, Jamie.
Thank you. So Mr. Crossley, who owns lot one, his concern was in protecting in the front here. He wants to keep as many trees as possible. So what we did was, we went out and located the trees that he had selected and flagged off. And we're showing them here individually as trees. We were able to bring some of the grading back in this area and here to minimize those disturbed trees in this area. There will be some that will have to be taken down. Roots will be encountered in this area right in here. They'll definitely be disturbed and taken down and over next to the septic. But we're going to be able to keep quite a few with this grading change that will hopefully keep some screenage for Mr. Crossley's house. Think it'll add a nice look for him, and I know he's excited about that. So that was the only change we did to the plan was the grading change right in this vicinity here, up in the front, to keep these trees in place at the lot one owner's request. Were there any questions on the plan from anybody? Besides that, it's the same plan that we went over at the last meeting.
I know that there was one concern brought up at one point. I don't know if we ever discussed it or if it was addressed. But I think on, I'm going to say lot 126 or 128, the distance of flow of water coming from the adjacent property towards the retention basin was quite a way. It seemed like a lot of water was going across one or both of those middle two lots for the drainage to get all the way through to there. Would there be any concerns for those owners with any flooding or any issues, you think, Jamie?
No, no, not at all. So what happens is, when you're in sandy soils, the way that we design drainage is that the sandier the soil, the less water that's going to end up in the infiltration basin. The way that this is swaled with the slopes, we have at least 1% slopes going down. So we don't expect any type of flooding at all. What we would expect over in here is if water was to come down, it'll hit into this area, it'll come down around, come in. Look, my cursor just jumped. Come in here, roll down, get into our little drainage area. This right here could see a little bit of water buildup because there's a culvert pipe, but it will dry up or empty out once it's, you know, once the pipe's done discharging it. This pipe runs at half a percent over to a four bay and another four bay for additional treatment, and then the infiltration basin. The same thing over here is water comes down, the longest road, whether it's up here or over in here, comes down, enters the swale, and gets into the infiltration basin through grass. Yeah, this is not a long run for drainage. And I have no concerns about localized flooding if it's graded as shown on the plan.
I guess my only other concern as far as the grading and the plan that we're looking at tonight and the finished product being there is, my understanding of gentleman Jeff that's with us tonight is the builder. He's going to be responsible for building the homes, but he's not responsible for the grading and the site work. Who is doing that? Who's responsible for that?
Ultimately, regardless of whether it's the builder or the general contractor, I think the town goes mostly after the property owner. If there's a violation for a site plan in a case like this. So when you guys issue a site plan, it goes to the property owner. Whether he hires ABC excavation or not, the town would find the property owner, to the best of my knowledge. If there's a violation with licensing, that's a different thing, and insurance. I believe to install the septic system, for example, you have to be licensed with the town, pull a permit, a trench permit, pay an application fee. I'm not sure if they've picked who's going to be doing all the earthwork for them, but they'll have to pull the appropriate permits with the Building Department and Board of Health to get those licenses to do those items.
Okay, so I just ultimately wanted to bring that out into the open so everybody hears that. So ultimately, the property owners will be responsible for the completed grading of their property.
Yes, that's correct.
Not on Jeff from JTB Construction, Jeff, or is it JBT? JT, thank you. So it's not his problem, it's the owner's problem. And if there is an issue, it's going to ultimately create a problem for themselves, nobody else.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I guess I just, I want to address one more thing. We've had some of Butters present. I see Norm Oral here tonight. I think one of his major concerns was dust control. So I think that's something that we would put in as a conditional part of the approval for just some sort of ongoing dust mitigation until there is loam and seed. Would you like to add anything briefly to that, Norm?
The only thing I would add is, I think what we just, what you just talked about, Mr. Chair, is if the builder is not responsible for the grading and/or dust and its individual owners, which I'm not sure how many they are. I know there's at least three involved. How, who controls it? So is that also up to the individual property owner? Is, we just said the builder is not involved in any of the actual site. So all these things that we are here to discuss as a site plan, I guess, when you make a statement that it's not a problem for anyone else. If, as we discussed in the first meeting, the plans, which are great, if they're not followed, then it does result in dust or stormwater if the grading isn't done correctly coming onto our budding property. So, you know, I guess that statement about it's up to the owners and whatever they do doesn't matter to anyone else. I guess I take issue with that. But again, ask who are the site contractors? We're here, we're here really talking about the site. This isn't a building review committee, it's a site review. And here we're talking about a site, we're looking to approve a plan, but we don't know who is doing the work. So I guess, and I haven't seen the covenant that was sent in today, obviously. So I don't know who's named in it or how that is written to assure people that what is in the plans is going to be followed and adhered to.
So to your point, and I think it's a fair point. And I think our job here tonight is, if we're going to give them a conditional approval, that the conditions would cover all parties. It would put some sort of a body in front of the finger, so to speak. So what I've drafted for dust control measures to be implemented by all parties involved to mitigate dust from exiting the properties until grass is growing. I guess I would, I mean, all parties involved. I mean, that's the site guys and the owners. So you're familiar with the process. If there's an issue, somebody's going to end up calling the zoning enforcement official. And I have to assume at that time, if there's an issue with dust control, he's going to have to go out and talk to the site guy that's doing the work onsite that they did hire. Or the owner that's present. And it seems like they, so few of the owners are present tonight. And they, you know, it's not like there are lots that they're flipping at this point. They're going to see these through construction. So I think that there is some sort of a line of contact established through the owners, building commissioner, and future site guy. So I just think all parties would be.
Well, do we know, I mean, up to date, the owners have been doing their own site work generally. Is that the case? I mean, it's just so we know. Or, I mean, I guess that's fine if no one knows to be named contractor in the future. But I think it's just helpful to know that going into this. And so, you know, that's the question, is it, is it, who's doing it?
Mr. Crossley, would you like to speak to that? Or do you have somebody that's going to do that work for you?
Craig, do you want to, are you there? Can you answer that one?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Yeah, hi, sorry about that. Yeah, I've gotten contract, in contact with Dig It Construction. They are in Yarmouth, and they've done many, you know, projects, big and small. You know, very professional. And I'm looking to contract them to do most of the site work. I have not finalized anything with them yet, but that's the direction I'm planning on going.
Okay, fair enough. And so that said, Mr. Oral, I don't feel comfortable with naming them in a condition if they're not on board. And so really what I'm looking for is either from yourself or another planning board member, if there's better language than all parties involved that we want to name in a condition of the dust control, that please, somebody suggest something.
Well, I know, going back to the, it's been so long, it's hard to remember. But going back to the first meeting, I think Zenith is doing a review, let's say, of the operations and/or grading, et cetera. So, I mean, is that the case where, you know, there'll be some sort of engineer onsite occasionally to monitor these conditions? And like I say, dust is one thing, but I'm also concerned about, you know, the final grading to make sure it works per plan. So if you're putting in a condition, I think, at least with the grading part, I think we determined at the last meeting that Zenith would be the entity reviewing the final grades to make sure they match the plan.
Yeah, and Mr. Oral, I understand. And that is in the covenant as far as the occupancy of lot two. Also, bond money's put aside for the loam and seed if it's not completed by, it's sometime in December. And yes, I believe that will be the ones. The covenant itself states that a registered professional engineer, the attorney left it open.
Jamie, if you don't mind, just for the record, Mr. Oral and everybody else involved, the applicant parties have provided us with a covenant. I'm going to try to briefly go through the covenant, but it names out the owners of the property, the parcels. In consideration of the board approving the said plan without the undersigned hereby covenants, and agrees with the inhabitants as follows. The applicant agrees to complete the construction of the drainage basin and four bays by September 30th, 2021. In the event the basins and four bays are not complete, the applicant agrees that, one, the certificate of occupancy for lot two shall be withheld, or $5,000 shall be deposited with the town of Lakeville Planning Board to secure completion of the basin and sediment four bays. The certificate of occupancy shall be released to the applicant upon receipt of a letter from the board of, to the board from a professional engineer or land surveyor duly licensed within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts stating that the construction of the detention basins and sediment four bays have been completed in substantial conformance with the approved plans. In the event monies are deposited, the monies shall be released to the depositor within 30 days of receipt of said letter. So the town will hold a bond. Basically, and/or occupancy permit from lot two won't be released as a surety to the town to make sure that there is basically a professional engineer stamp saying that what was said to be done for drainage is done. That's the covenant that they provided. It also goes on to say, the applicant agrees to complete the loaming and seeding of lots one, two, and three on or before December 31st, 2021. In the event loaming and seeding is not completed, the applicant shall deposit $9,000 with the planning board. After the loaming and seeding is completed, the applicant shall provide a letter from a professional engineer or land surveyor duly licensed within the Commonwealth stating that the grading of lots has been completed in substantial conformance with the approved plans. Within 30 days of receipt of this letter, monies deposited within the planning board for the loam and seeding shall be returned to the applicant. Then it goes on with a signature page for the planning board and signature pages for it to be filed at the Registry of Deeds by both the owners present tonight, Mr. Staran and Mr. Crossley. So I think that's a pretty thorough covenant that they're offering up on site plan review. And then they also have included a drainage easement and maintenance agreement, which I think we would be requesting that that be filed with the Registry of Deeds as well as part of the conditional approval. Do any planning board members have anything they'd like to say or add? Michelle?
Thank you, Mark. The one thing I just realized from my notes previously was that I had written down the 25,000 for the bond. And in this covenant, it says 5,000. Does that adequately cover the work that may be needed if it's not completed?
It's established a little bit different, Michelle. What we did was, when the client spoke with, when they spoke with Attorney O'Shaughnessy and myself, they kind of went through and game planned what made more sense on how to set this up. And so what they did was, they got some quotes for the loaming and seeding work to be done. And they were coming in right around $9,000 to do the loam and seed. And then as far as the first part of the covenant, the way that I'm reading it is that if he's not getting an occupancy permit by September 30th, then he's posting the bond if the drainage isn't in. Plus, he can't get the bond money or the occupancy back until that drainage is in and a professional engineer has reviewed it and signed off on it. So it gives the town double incentive to get this going, which is he'll probably have a house built, and he's going to have cash tied up for the basin to go in. So in that case, it felt like it was a step-by-step process that was a little bit fairer for all of the participants in this, where the numbers are a little bit more indicative of the tasks needed.
And Jamie, is when you say the loam and seed and the drainage, is the grading also included in that as well?
So whenever they do grading for sites, they do rough grading with the fill. They're looking to put down four or six inches of loam because screened loam is extremely expensive. And actually, good quality screened loam is pretty hard to come by. So, yes, it's typically rough graded in a general manner that it will work, and they can spread four to six inches of loam. Don't get me wrong, there will be touch-up areas, there's no question about it. There always are. But in a general sense, they're going to try to get it as close as they can, you know, if they're any good at running a machine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other planning board members have anything they'd like to add? I saw Peter's hand shoot up quick there, Barbara, you'll be next.
A quick one, just any, did conservation have any issues with this at all? I know it was going to them after us, or did it not even need to see them?
No, there's no jurisdictional wetland areas here, Peter. So we did, natural heritage.
That's all, okay.
Barbara?
I'm unmuted. I just want to thank you, Jamie, the package with the covenant and everything with the drainage easement and the maintenance agreement was very nicely done. So we appreciate that. There's a, it looks like we're supposed to have an Exhibit A, was that going to be filled in later?
It is, it's going to be the exhibit for the easement. And if I may share my screen, I can show you, because we have it on the plan set. It's just for recording purposes. This dashed line that runs down here is going to be the easement line for the drainage basin. So Attorney O'Shaughnessy wants to have, he wants to have an exhibit on an eight and a half by 11 that will be attached to that easement document so that it's very clear as to where the easement's located in perpetuity.
Okay, since you have your mouse almost exactly where I was going to ask another question, right near where the drainage, do you think they'll consider putting trees in there? Or is there any plan for any, you know, to kind of mitigate the severity of that drainage ditch?
We don't have, proposal, we don't have anything proposed right now with it, Barbara. I'm sure that the Crossleys and Mr. Staran are going to plant some landscaping trees. The thing with the drainage basin is that this is really to pick up the water from Crooked Lane that's draining into the site now. So it's not generated really from the houses at all. This is to pick up the lack of any drainage controls on Crooked Lane and making it so there's not a flood-out issue in the road.
Okay, terrific. And I think those were all my questions, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Butters or anybody present at all?
I don't.
Was that, or you don't, Jack?
I don't have any issues, I think Jamie has covered them all.
Thank you. So I'm just going to run through the list of conditions that I have for recommending approval. The first would be that the enclosed drainage easement be filed with the Registry of Deeds. The enclosed covenant will be filed with the Registry of Deeds. The stormwater management plan will be followed as drafted as a condition of approval. Jamie, we didn't talk about, but we wanted to include in a condition, the edge of road. A small portion of the roadway was actually damaged, I think, when a well truck went in there. I'm going to read through the condition that I have, and then we can discuss it. Edge of road of Crooked Lane between, I think it's 126 and 128, be repaired using infrared pavement patching methods with the repair will match or exceed the thickness of the existing roadway. And the limit of the repair will be agreed on by the Lakeville Highway Superintendent, which runs approximately 16 to 24 inches deep into the road from the edge. And I'm going to say it's approximately 25 feet long, maybe. And again, I would defer to Franklin from the Highway Department on that one. The next condition I have is dust control measures would be implemented by all parties involved in site work or ownership to mitigate dust from exiting the properties until grass is growing. And then that all natural heritage requirements be adhered to throughout. So if there's, I guess before we go on and discuss all of those or any additional, Jamie, do you want to just kind of talk about the edge of road repair?
Sure, I spoke with Mr. Moniz today. And he's super busy, as you know, in town, they're paving several streets, which is fantastic to see. So when I spoke with him, you know, he's reluctant, he doesn't like, the long and the short of it is, is that his feeling was if we did the infrared patching method, that would probably be his suggestion. Not having been very familiar with infrared, you know, patching, I did quite a bit of research this afternoon and found it's pretty amazing. What they do is they heat the asphalt that's there in place and add new asphalt in, so it becomes a monolithic. Heat the asphalt that's there in place and add new asphalt in, so it becomes a monolithic. Monolithic asphalt section and they and they tie it into the existing asphalt that's there, so it's it's a much stronger. Asphalt than say putting in filler or a patch. So you know, it's it makes a lot of sense what his request said. So I don't, I've talked with my clients and and if that's what the the planning board and the DPW wants, that they'll provide that.
Okay, so does anybody have any other discussion based on a conditional approval of this site plan review? All right, Mr. Oral?
Yes, thank you. I think some of the things I brought up in the first meeting were were trash. Controlling wind blown trash, trash leaving the exit. And then what the plans are for porta potties, I know lot four. Mr. I pray, he says he typically brings a porta potty in once the framing starts, which looks like that would be his next step. So I just want to bring those up again from the last meeting.
Okay, I see Jeff Crawford, your head went up if you want to speak to that.
Jeff, you have to unmute yourself.
There will be a porta potty on every lot during construction.
And Jeff, there'll be there'll be a dumpster on site as well, correct?
Correct, yes.
And and can we can we count on you and your guys to make sure that the site, after you're done work every day, you're just taking a look to make sure. Tyvek or whatever it is and blowing around?
Absolutely.
So I've added dust and debris control measures. So that included in that condition debris is sort of, so Jeff, you'll be responsible for the debris part of that.
Yes.
During construction and then the owners and the site work guys will be responsible for the dust portion of that and all parties are going to have to. Just, you know, actively just do their part just to.
Yes.
Take care of that. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Oral. Is there anything else we've missed? I think we've covered pretty much everything at this point. So I'd like to make a motion to conditionally recommend approval of the site plans for one twenty four, one twenty six. One twenty eight and one thirty Crooked Lane as follows. The enclosed drainage easement. Plan and agreement be filed at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, the enclosed covenant be filed with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. The stormwater management plan be followed as drafted as a condition of approval. The edge of road between one twenty six and twenty eight be repaired using infrared pavement patching method. Where the repair will match or exceed the thickness of the existing roadway. And the limit of repair will be agreed on by the Lakeville Highway Superintendent, which is approximately sixteen to twenty four inches. In from the edge of road. Dust and debris control measures will be implemented by all parties involved in site work and construction to mitigate. Dust and or debris from exiting the property until grass is growing and throughout construction for debris. And the MESA natural heritage requirements will be adhered to throughout. And that's my motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And myself, motion carries unanimously. You guys are good to go.
Thank you very much, everybody, appreciate the time.
You're welcome. While we're here and we've got all these parties involved. Mr. Crawford, I'd like to just mention, I I think at a previous hearing, your. Your reputation was a little bit put in question and I just wanted to state for the record that you do have a stellar reputation in town. And, you know, I don't want it to be. I don't want to have the appearance of what felt otherwise.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome. All right, thank you, everybody. Moving on to our next agenda item is Julia's way of covenant. Jamie, are you here present representing that?
I am, I told Niles I'd fill in form.
Okay, I have some information. Have a letter from the fire chief. To the Lakeville Planning Board, dear honorable members, this letter has been written. To communicate the findings of July seventh, twenty twenty one inspection of. Required fire department access to all dwellings constructed or under construction on Julia's Way in Lakeville. The access road was found to have. A compliant paved surface twenty feet in width. There were no issues with the road grade and overhead clearance. The vehicle turnaround at the end of the access road was found to be adequate and accommodating to all fire department apparatus. At this time, in the road's current condition, the Lakeville Fire Department accepts Julia's Way as a fire department access road. Respectfully, Michael Bryan. We have that, we had a couple of photographs of the roadway in our packet, Jamie. And I actually have a. A letter from yourself. Actually, it's from Niles, sorry.
Yep, that's okay.
Want me to read that or?
You don't need to for me.
Okay, so I'll I'll read it for the record. So from Zenith Consulting Engineers, Niles Zager, we have inspected the above referenced private roadway. And hereby certify that it has been constructed in general compliance with the approved plans. And the certificate of approval which you issued on March twenty fourth, two thousand sixteen was recorded in Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. Plan book sixty, page four thirty eight, on behalf of Malik Construction, in which we request you release the covenant. Issued by your board. So at this time, would you like to speak to this, Jamie?
Sure, so a few years back, foresight engineering had proposed. A private waivered subdivision roadway named Julia's Way. That was at a time where I was working for Prime Engineering and we were doing peer review for foresight, so I did have. Some intimate knowledge on the on the project itself, I believe the definitive plans were stamped by Richard Rayo. From Prime as well, anyways, the the subdivision actually has turned out quite nice, it's. It provides there were two former lots and then I think three lots off of Julia Way itself, which is a hammerhead. And the the roadway is 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 nice and flat, the pavement looks nice. The infiltration basin is constructed on the left hand side as you drive up. It's. Overall, it's 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 a it's a nice looking place, so I think the release of the covenant is purely just to clean up the title on this. So it's not when he goes to, anybody goes to sell their property in ten years, they're not coming back to try to tie up a loose end, I don't believe there's any cash bond held. Or anything like that with the with the board, so this is purely them looking to say, yep, listen, we've got everything tied up, it's. It's it's buttoned up and good and would like the planning board to just give thumbs up as well, so we can close this out and move on.
I guess that's, I find that a little strange that there was. No, nothing, but I guess we're, it's not going to be an accepted road, I guess that's kind of the way we're handling a lot of these.
Yeah, the the way that they, the way they used to do it, Mark, was couldn't get occupancy on the last lot. Or sometimes even a building permit until the asphalt was down and okay. And that was back when Jeremy Peck, he would go out and actually inspect the private roads, so. As we've changed DPW directors, you know, the the process through the planning board has changed quite a bit. You know, Jeremy actually used to go and sit in at a lot of the meetings too.
Okay. So where this is kind of a standalone and. We haven't done a ton of these, what I'd like to do is just send this information by town council, have them give it a blessing. And then Kathy, is that something you can take care of, just have Amy Questle just take a look at this with the the question? Are we okay to release the covenant on this roadway with the brief explanation? Of maybe include the Zenith letter from Niles. That states that it's a private roadway, we didn't hold any bond on it or anything and just. Make sure that we're good to do just that.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, does the board agree and should we make a motion? Make a motion.
Sounds good, if you need a motion, so moved forward that to Towns Legal.
Okay. I second that, I have a motion and a second just to send the information by council and hopefully get this on our next meeting agenda. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, motion carries, so we'll keep that rolling, Jamie, don't hesitate to check in with Kathy. Maybe just before our next meeting to see that it's on the agenda or not.
All right, fantastic.
Mark?
Barbara?
Hi, I I don't want to, no, I don't want to make this specific to this case, but we have had some discussions about. You know, making things a little more specific around these private ways and so forth. What do you think about the need for a shared maintenance agreement for the for the asphalt? Because you have four homes, if those home buyers buy the property, will they be thinking that, you know, somebody else will be taking care of the property and then end up having to spend? You know, beaucoup bucks, I don't want to get involved with this specific property, it's just a general question.
No, and and actually, I believe on the definitive plan that that is actually stated. But the intention is always there, either be one of two mechanisms, either an association or a homeowner's association or a common roadway maintenance agreement. I think Bob Mather was famous for the common roadway maintenance agreement.
Yeah.
It depends on the attorney, but those are the two typical documents that are used and there's, there should be one in place here.
Okay, thank you.
And the other one that we've been using with the. Association, excuse me, that pretty much does eventually cover maintenance of the roadway, which could be replacement.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So while you're here, Jamie.
Yes, sir.
The announcement, I'm jumping way ahead in our agenda, our next meeting is August twelfth at seven PM twenty twenty one.
Okay, great, thank you.
I am going to, in new business tonight, discuss potential of going back to live meetings. So stay tuned, I don't know.
I look forward to it.
But I'm I'm hoping, I know conservation's got an alive one coming up, I don't know if it's. Their first or the second August, so if that works out, I probably would recommend to us doing the same.
Sound good, all right, thanks for your time, everybody.
Thanks for coming. Next item on the agenda, the master plan implementation fee review project. So Michelle, you sent a document that was. Sort of an updated version of what we had at the last meeting.
Yeah, and and it was great that Kathy did those. Meeting notes too, because I was able to compare what I had, what she had and it matched perfectly, so. This is all that we discussed. In purple on the the far right column. And there's two items that I know we wanted town council review. In regards to the special permit items, but I think. Pretty much everything else we've gone through with a fine tooth comb, I would think.
Is everybody else satisfied with this? I I think at this point, we. My recommendation would be. Highlight the few items, send it to the building commissioner. For one last review, because we're kind of, we made changes based on his recommendations. Let him look at it and then ask him also. If he would recommend that we send this to council before we schedule to have a public hearing to make these changes official. That seem like a good road to go?
Sure, yeah.
Did, are those not his comments that are highlighted in blue? Did he not see the most recent from the seven, eight meeting?
I don't know.
The standout that Kathy did, I thought these were all of his comments in blue.
I believe they were.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure that when we made the changes that.
He saw those, okay.
Yeah, he he just got, put his eyes on the changes and we didn't.
Okay.
He didn't give us language for the change, he just made suggestions and we may have made a mistake in our. Assumption that we made a correction. You know, he's he's really well versed in. These things and I just think. It would be wise to go to him before council, but that would be the plan, to send it back to Nate, to then get it to Amy Questle. And then we schedule for a public hearing. And I I'd say we do that. Even if we're not sure there's going to be a fall town meeting, let's just get it done and if we have to hold another one in the spring. We will.
Sounds good to me.
So this will make a motion to send those fee, proposed fee structures over to Nate and then subsequently to town council. And. I guess we need a second, right, Mark?
I'll second that, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, motion carries unanimously, we send them along and also let's keep that on our agenda for the next meeting. Just as an update, if nothing else. We had a couple of sets of minutes. In our packet, did everybody get a chance to look through them, I'll get a quick glance. Find truth column, but. Does anybody have any questions, Michelle?
Just one little item on the May thirteenth minutes. For others presenting. I think instead of having a comma between engineers and Craig, it should be a semicolon. And then also in between owner and Kiko. There should be a semicolon so that it reads Craig Crosley owner and Kiko Orrell, not owner Kiko Orrell. So just the two semicolons, please.
Wow, good job. That is proofreading.
Well, I read it and I was like, well, she wasn't the owner, and then I realized that that's, it was just a punctuation thing. But other than that, I look good, so I would approve that minor change.
And so I make a motion to approve the May thirteenth minutes of meeting for the planning board with the changes noted.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
I accept that they spelled my first name wrong instead of a lack of Jack, so it's not a big issue, but.
Well, we should catch those.
So you at least know that I reviewed them.
Actually, you weren't present at this one.
No, I'm one of them, well, you know, I'm trying to pull them all up now, but one of them, they misspelled my name, it's not a big issue.
Okay, so for the May thirteenth minutes, motion carries. Have the July eighth minutes. Any other corrections or issues with those?
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the July eighth minutes, all in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And it looks like your name was spelled correctly in that one, Jack.
Things are looking up.
All right, so we've approved two sets of minutes. Kathy, I had the Bountiful Farms things in my packet. I didn't get a chance to attend that hearing because I had, actually was doing some stuff. Did anybody else get to attend that Zoom thing today? Kathy, did you? No. Okay. Do we need to discuss? Anything to do with Bountiful Farms? I don't see it really on the agenda, but I had that 7A in the packet tonight. So.
No, just really for your information, if you wanted to go to that.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I actually, I was gonna try, but I just had too much going on at the end of the day and prepare for tonight's meeting. But I appreciate it. I think we've covered everything. I don't see anything else. Anybody else have anything that they wanted to discuss before we close up? Barbara? Oh, you had that document.
Yeah.
I actually, I was intrigued by that.
Isn't it interesting? Yeah.
Yes.
Different data. I don't know if that's the right exact figure, but what I shared with you guys was an article I'd read earlier this year. Something about the cost of housing on, on housing. And obviously we know the cost of housing is a huge burden. It's a huge problem in society in general. And I was shocked to find out that regulation would, they're contributing 23.8% of the final price of a new single family home is related to regulations. So, you know, it really, it's been kind of mingling around in my head, but it's food for thought. And, you know, as we're looking at these fee structures and stuff, it's just interesting to see how it all flows downstream, you know? Ultimately, the concern. So interesting data if you guys want to check it out. I mean, I think there's important reasons why we do this stuff. We have it so that our buildings, our housing stock is much more resilient than it is in areas where we don't have a lot of regulations and there's a lot of good stuff that's coming out of the regulations, but 23.8% is a big number. That's a big number. You know, and I'm not sure that people are earning enough money to cover that. So food for thought.
When I read that today, Barbara, I couldn't help but think like to speak to maybe some builders in town. And because they would give us the, I wouldn't want exact numbers from them, but they could share percentages. Do you know what I mean? There's a few builders that come to mind. I won't, I won't say them, but they could actually share with us and say, oh yeah, that's accurate. Or they'd be like, no, it's, I'm nowhere near 23% with permitting and regulations, you know? But I was curious, is that including like, what's that include for 23% of the total build?
So I give you a couple of examples.
Yeah.
I'll give you a couple of examples. That, the stretch energy code kicked in in 2012. I was actually the first permit in Lakeville under the new code because I built my house, I pulled my permit after December 31st of 11. And I, I had to go and find the first company to do the, there's a blow a door test that you do at the end of construction, but it's a energy raider that sees the whole project through. That adds about $2,500 just to hire the energy raider. And then the insulation that I had to use rather than pre-2012 to, then you had pretty much had to go to closed cell foam or a foam spray type thing that tripled the cost of insulation. So the insulation cost more than my foundation.
So they're actually passing along like building costs and labeling them as regulation? I, I'm not, you know what I'm saying? Like.
Yeah, because, because those are regulated changes that, you know, they're telling you your house is going to be more energy efficient if you now have to do X.
I see. So that makes that, that, that makes that amount make a little bit more sense. Because if they're saying prior to a certain day, it used to cost me X to build this house and now after that day it cost me Y and that this, that difference is, I take materials and labor out of it. But, you know, if they're saying because of like added regulations, it's now this much more. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's, it adds costs. It's not that you're just paying a fee to the government, but
Right.
the, the construction costs went up because they regulated the hell out of. So the same thing with the, the wind codes. Pre, I'm not sure the date, the, the, the wind codes, it was before that, but you just needed anchor bolts to hold the, the sills on the foundation. Then they changed the plywood that you saw that they, all of a sudden they turned the plywood vertical or they were doing different things with plywood to tie the, the sill plate into the rim joist right to the roof or ceiling joists in the second floor attic space. In higher wind zones, you have these anchors that now bolt the house to the foundation to, right to the roof. So the, the roof is bolted to the foundation in certain wind zones. So all those mechanical fasteners and the installation of them probably adds five grand to certain houses.
And I think it's way bigger than that too. It's also, it's regulations regarding workers, it's regulations regarding lumber production. And I'm sure there's importing regulations and.
With that energy code, windows and doors got more expensive to make them more airtight and/or better U-values in the glass.
And there's important reasons why the government requires those things. I mean, you know, the big picture on it is ultimately to be, build a more resilient building stock, a housing stock. And that will be more efficient for us in the long run financially and socially. So, you know, there are reasons behind what they do it, but I still think the numbers are shocking. And I thought it'd be good for us to consider, you know, so I shared the article.
Now, when you say that, Barbara, I, I question it. I question if how much of it is actually necessary compared to special interest groups pressuring government agencies to make these changes because they want their sale.
When we, I worked for Fannie Mae, well, not when they, Fannie Mae was my client, we had several very large weather events. And what's really interesting is to look at the losses that these large institutions took and those communities took because of the different building codes in some of those communities. Whether or not that mobile home had to be permanently affixed or temporarily affixed was materially important. The regulations and the enforcement of those regulations had a big impact on those economies. How quickly they recovered from those events and how much the taxpayers nationwide had to get involved with, with the recovery for those specific areas. And it's, it was shocking to go state by state because you could literally see on a map. If you were to take all the houses that were on there, you'd have to say there's something different going here than going there. Part of it could be the age of the housing stock. Part of it could be perhaps their proximity to the low line water. But a lot of it does have to do with local regulations around, around building ordinances. The other thing is with the energy efficiency thing, the, the reason that's really important, there's 100 reasons why that's important. But ultimately it should result in a stronger, more resilient use of our resources over time. So buildings use about 30% of our energy. So when you think about energy waste, if you want to make a big difference in the world, we can all jump into electric cars or we can start really being more responsible about the way we're using energy inside of buildings. And insulation is definitely a big part of that, especially in the Northeast. So, you know, anyway, enough of that discussion.
No, it's, it's a good discussion. I think it's, it's, it's nice to actually see, hear somebody talk about it and see that somebody recognizes that. And, and before I use the insulation as an example, that if you just jumped to the closed cell foam, it costs that much more. You could still get away with the fiberglass bat insulation. But you can't fit 11 inches of that in a two by eight. So even if you didn't want to use the closed cell foam, then you have to change the rafters from two by eights to two by 12s to fit enough.
That's when it gets expensive. Yeah.
So there's so many layers to it. Yeah, there is probably a bit of it that's quite necessary. And I think to Michelle's point too, I think some of that steel that we put in homes in Massachusetts is a bit overkill because there aren't a whole lot of homes that have blown off their foundations in Massachusetts.
Yeah, we have more snow load than wind crew.
But even at that, their homes aren't collapsing. It's those crappy buildings, the cement block buildings from the 50s with the, the flat steel truss roofs that collapse.
Right?
Yeah.
Interesting, Barbara. I mean, the, the increases from 2011 to now is significant. Wow.
But the houses, prices of houses have as well.
Exactly.
I think it's relative. You know.
Yeah. Definitely reflects in the housing cost.
Yes.
So, yeah, thank, thank you for giving that to us, Barbara.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Then I'll second your motion.
All right.
All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.